I'd like to call this meeting of the Howell Planning Board to order. And Eileen, can you please provide our opening statement?
Yes. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be opened. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 4th, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 5th, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 4th, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77.
At this point, a part of the reorganization meeting, we administer those for new members or returning members, and if the mayor would allow me the honor of administering the oaths, or that mayor can have that honor herself.
Absolutely.
I'd like to ask Mr. Schneider, Mr. Kudrick, Mr. Nacastro, and Mr. Seaman.
Yeah, Nacastro's here.
He's not here, okay. That'll wait on me.
Do you want the portable mic, or just hold it up?
I'll give you the chi-chi.
You want a photo, or a video?
I'd ask you, if you call, just read aloud, please, or I can read and you can repeat it, whichever you're more comfortable doing. What do you prefer?
Read.
Okay. So, well, I'm gonna ask you, the only distinction is your names are different, and then your positions are different. Paul, you're Class 4. Andrew, you're Class 2. And Robert, you're Class 3.
No, Robert, you're Alternate 1.
Alternate, I'm sorry. Okay. Raise your right hand, please. I state your names.
I.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
that will support the Constitution of the United States
Support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the same and to the governments established in the United States
To the same and to the governments established in the United States.
and in this state
Under the state.
under the authority of the people, so help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will impartially and justly perform all the duties of the office of
That I will impartially and justly perform
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
so help me God. Welcome back, or welcome to the board.
If everybody could just sign that and give it back to me before the end of the night, I appreciate it.
You didn't even get, like, a round of applause.
Oh!
And Eileen, can you please take the roll call?
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Nash?
Here.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Boyle?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro? I believe he's gonna be late?
I do not believe he will be at his.
Okay. He will be excused. Mayor Berger?
Here.
And Chairman Schneider?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Can we please have our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地，and justice for all.
At this point of reorganization, if the board would like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, that would be the appropriate time.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
That was Mr. Russo, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going executive session.
The Planning Board will now reconvene.
Mr. Nacastro has arrived, so we'd like to have him
Thank you. Yes, I'm here. Oh, I gotta swear in? You missed the party.
I state
I'm Robin Nacastro.
Do solemnly swear
Sorely swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the same and to the governments established
to the same and to the governments established
in the United States and in this state
in the United States and in this state
under the authority of the people
under the authority of the people
so help me God
so help me God
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear
or affirm that I will impartially and justly
I will impartially and justly
perform all the duties of the office of
perform all the duties of the office of Class 3 Planning Board
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
so help me God
so help me God.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
I fit a delay.
At this point of the reorganization, are there nominations for a member to serve as chairman?
There is. I'd like to nominate Bob Nash for chairman.
Is there a second on that nomination?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Roll call, please.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, the board.
I turn the mic over to the chairman.
Thank you. Do I have a nomination for vice chairman?
Make a motion to nominate Mr. Tannenhouse.
Just second. Eileen, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Do I have a nomination for board secretary?
I'd like to nominate Eileen Rubano.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Eileen, please call the roll.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Um, yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Do I have a nomination for consulting attorney?
I make a motion to firm of lesbian Ronald Cuchero.
Second.
Thank you. Eileen, call the roll, please.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Do I have a motion for consulting engineer?
Make a motion for CME.
Second.
Eileen, call the roll, please.
Was that Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Thank you.
A nomination for consulting planner.
CME?
Second.
Eileen, call the roll, please.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for certified tree expert?
I motion CME.
Thank you.
That was, I'm sorry. Thank you. Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion for administrative officer?
I motion Eileen Rubano.
Second.
Eileen, call the roll, please.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chairman Nash?
Definitely, yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Do I have a motion for recording secretary?
I will again motion for Eileen Rubano.
Second.
Eileen, call the roll, please.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes. Do I have nomination for official newspaper?
I'll make a motion to the Tri-Town News and Star Ledger.
Second. Eileen, call the roll.
One second. Mr., former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
And if we could just go back, we have to do the resolution for the meeting dates, please?
Oh, I am sorry, I missed that.
That's okay.
Can I have a motion for the 2018 both regular meeting and master plan subcommittee meeting dates that was distributed to the board?
I'll move. Make a motion to accept as with the changes as Ms. Rubano has noted to us.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Eileen, call the roll.
Former Mayor Gatto?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolutions memorialized.
Now, the environmental commission liaison is an appointee, and I appoint Nick Kuzer
A second.
Do we have to vote on those?
No.
No, I don't think so.
I think they're all chairman's appointments.
Oh, okay.
Site review committee, we're going to have Tom Boyle as the chairman, Chief Kudrick as a member, and former Mayor Gatto as the other member. Master plan review committee, Tom Russo will be the chairman, Brian Tannenhouse will be the member, and Robert Seaman will be the other member. And that concludes our appointments.
Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And before we get started, I would like to honor former chairman, Mr. Schneider. He's leaving me with big shoes to fill, and I hope that I will be able to do at least half the job that you were done.
You're gonna do a great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to excuse myself in another meeting to attend.
Okay.
Eileen, let the record reflect that former Mayor Gatto has to leave for another meeting. And Mr. Seaman, if you want to come up and join us on the dais.
Approval of minutes, regular minutes of October 19th, 2017. Eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, myself, Mr. Russo, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Boyle, Mr. Nacastro, and Mr. Schneider. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October 19th, 2017.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have the regular meeting of November 2nd, 2017. Eligible voters are Mr. Kuzer, Mr. Russo, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Boyle, Mayor Berger, and Mr. Schneider.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Fine.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
And Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, December 21st, 2017? Eligible voters, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Boyle, Mayor Berger, and Mr. Schneider.
I'll move the meeting.
I'll second it.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
And Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do. The first item we have, I have an email from Mr. Akazano, who is the attorney for one of the submission waivers. So, he asked if we could just put him last because he's gonna have trouble getting here. We told him to try to be here by 8:15 the latest. That is the first item of business. The second
And if I could just chime in, I am communicating with the applicant. I think they're probably gonna request to just go to our next meeting agenda, but I can further confirm, yeah.
Thank you. I also have a letter from Mr. Cohen. He is the attorney for Stavola Asphalt Company, which is the first application on our agenda tonight. He asks, or he said that the case was presently listed for tonight for scheduling purposes only. He says, "Please be advised at this time that his client has elected to withdraw their minor site plan application. In the event they elect to go forward with this project, they will refile their application. Thank you for your courtesies in this matter." So, that application has been withdrawn. The next piece of correspondence I have is from Mr. Junko. He is the attorney for Howell Family Apartments, which is the second application on the agenda tonight. He said, "Please accept this letter on behalf of Howell Family Apartments relative to the application pending before the Planning Board. It was currently scheduled for hearing on Thursday, January 18th. This will confirm that he would like to carry this application to February 15th, 2018 with renotice. He has also granted the board an extension of time to act on this application through February 15th, and if an additional extension is necessary, it will be addressed at that
So, how does our February 1st calendar look?
Well, he wants February 15th.
Oh, he only wants the 15th?
Yes. And as of right now, because we didn't have dates, there's technically nothing on that meeting agenda.
Okay. So, then I guess we can put him on for February 15th.
And he will renotice.
Okay. Counselor, would you like to make the formal announcement?
Oh, yes. If anybody's here is interested in the Howell Family Apartments application, case SP-1039, that application is being adjourned. It's gonna be carried to the regular meeting scheduled for February 15, 2018, 7:00 PM in this room. The applicant has represented that it will renotice. So, if you did receive a certified letter previously, you should get another one. It'll also be in the newspaper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also clarify for anyone in the audience that case number SP-1031, Stavola Asphalt Company, Inc., the applicant has chosen to withdraw their application completely. And if they do proceed, they will renotice and resubmit. So, if anyone's here for that application, it will not be heard.
Okay. The next is another letter from Mr. Cohen, who also represents Joseph Wilhelm. That is the third application on tonight's agenda. And he has asked, because this was scheduled for scheduling purposes only on January 4th, which our meeting was canceled due to the storm, and moved to tonight, he asked now that that matter please be placed on a public hearing for the first meeting in February 2018, and also granted the board an extension of time through February 28th. And as with the other one, there is nothing on February 1st agenda because we did not have dates. So, that is the only matter so far on that account.
Okay. So, we'll move him to the February 1st meeting.
Okay. If anybody's here that's interested in the Joseph Wilhelm application, SP-1035, that application is being carried on notice to the board's regularly scheduled meeting on February 1st, 2018, 7:00 PM in this room. There'll be no further notice either by mail or by newspaper, February 1st, 2018.
The next is a letter from Mr. Butler, who is the attorney for L&amp;L Paving. They're the fourth application on tonight's agenda. They were also carried to tonight, and he asked that his application be adjourned until the second meeting in February, and has granted an extension of time to February 28th, 2018. I believe he is waiting for the resolution from the zoning board regarding this matter.
Okay. So, we'll carry him to February 15th?
Similar announcement, if you are here for the application for L&amp;L Paving Company, Inc., case number SP-1026-A, that application is being carried on notice to the board's second February meeting, which is February 15th, 2018, 7:00 PM in this room. There'll be no further mail or newspaper notice.
And the last item is an email that I received from Mr. Alferi. We were going back and forth. He wasn't sure what to do with his meeting dates. At the time we spoke, there was nothing on February 15th. So, he would also like to carry 41 Randolph, and he will renotice for February 15th. He asked that I just confirm that date once we have our reorg. He also granted the board an extension of time to February 28th. And that is for the last application, 41 Randolph LLC.
Okay. We'll carry him also to February 15th.
But he's gonna renotice.
He is going to renotice.
Okay. If anybody here tonight is here for the case for 41 Randolph LLC, SP-1027, that application is being carried to the board's second regular meeting in February, February 15, 2018, 7:00 PM in this room. The applicant has represented that he will renotice. So, if you receive a certified letter, you will receive another one, and it'll also be in the newspaper 10 days prior to the hearing date.
Thank you.
That's it for correspondence. That was enough.
All right. Let's move on then to resolutions. Case number SP-1034, resolution granting minor site plan approval. Eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, myself, Mr. Russo, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Boyle, Deputy Mayor Nacastro, and Mr. Schneider. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it to memorialize.
A second.
Brian, thank you. Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion, uh, resolution's memorialized.
Do we have the resolution for SD 2847A?
Yes.
That was...
That was emailed to you by Mr. Cuchero's office.
Okay. So, the next resolution for memorialization, case number SD 2847A-2, Selma LLC, Haystack Glen, resolution granting one-year extension of time. Eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Boyle, Deputy Mayor Nacastro, Mayor Berger, and Mr. Schneider. I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
And who was the second?
I did. No, Paul was the motion. I'm sorry, Rob was the motion. Paul was the second.
Thank you. Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Resolution's memorialized.
Thank you.
We have the one for Arnold Boulevard as well.
Okay. Next resolution for memorialization is case number SD 2981, Arnold Boulevard LLC and TEK Warehouse LLC. It's a resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. Boyle, Deputy Mayor Nacastro, Mayor Berger, and Mr. Schneider.
I don't think I'm eligible.
For submission waivers for that one?
I don't think I voted on that. I don't think I was set for that.
I have my vote holding on.
I think you're accused.
Nope, you were here. You voted. It's a subdivision on Arnold Boulevard. It was just a submission waiver here. That's the one where we were discussing, I think, the 2,000-foot downstream and white people were coming.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Mayor Berger?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next resolution we don't have, that'll be on February 1st's agenda.
We don't even have it on here.
Oh, all right, then. I had it on mine, sorry.
Okay. Do we want to go into the review of submission waivers before the board?
Yes. And before you start, the first one, Smith Family Properties, the attorney has gotten back with Laura, they would like to be moved to February 1st, and that doesn't require any notice, so it's not a problem.
Okay. Does Counselor need to make an announcement on that?
No, I don't think you do, right?
No, because the hearing process hasn't formally started yet, there's no need for announcement.
Okay.
Excuse me? John. Has that been postponed?
For Smith Family Properties?
Yes.
Yes, February 1st, 2018.
Okay. Thank you very much.
For submission waivers?
For submission waivers only.
Yes, yes. I'm Gary Smith. I'm waiting for Frank to come, but I guess he's not coming today.
Sorry, Mr. Smith.
They didn't think they could make him time because we only have about five minutes left to our meeting.
Okay. All right.
Oh, you know what? I mean, wait a minute. Okay. Is, sir, is your application through a corporation or an LLC, or it's just you and perhaps your wife individually?
It's an LLC.
You need an attorney? Okay.
Yes. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next case is case number SD 2983, John and Helen, Helen Tosh. It's a minor subdivision. The application of John and Helen Tosh is applicants and John and Helen Tosh and Daniel and Donna Buckley as owners seeking minor subdivision approval to straighten a lot line on premises known as Block 24, Lots 3 and 4, 122 Larabee Boulevard. Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Christopher Healy. I represent the applicants from Bathgate, Wagner &amp; Wolf. I'm here with our engineer, Rich Oberman, and to the extent that you'll have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Okay.
Just wait, okay.
Okay. We're going to swear in Laura Newman. Laura, do you swear or affirm that the testimony or any guidance you provided to the board this evening will be the truth to the best of your ability?
I do.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, we have a report dated January 2nd, 2018. The submission waivers are specifically outlined in Item 4, and while it does appear that there's a lot of waivers requested, I think it's important to note that this is actually a lot line adjustment. So, it's two existing lots, and there's going to be a shift in property. There's no change in improvements nor any improvements proposed with this application. So, given the nature and the scope of the project, I take no exception to the granting of those waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
And we don't, by shifting the lot line, we don't create any variances?
Well, that would be substantive to the application. There are some existing conditions with it, and there are some variances. However, those are technical and would require the testimony to support those.
Okay. But for the submission waiver, you're okay with it?
That is correct.
Okay. Does the board see any need for testimony from the applicant's engineer?
Nope.
If not, I'll entertain a motion, granting submission waivers?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Mayor Berger?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good day.
Okay. So, our lengthy agenda has come to an end.
Please.
Do we have any reason to go into executive session? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
[inaudible] Okay. So, our lengthy agenda has come to an end.
Please.
Do we have any reason to go into executive session? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.